The allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
So, good evening, everybody. Um, this is one of the honors you get as superintendent of um, schools. Is to swear in our, our new board members. So, um, we have no particular order. Uh, Michelle, would you please come forward? Raise your right hand and then say it after me. I'm Michelle O'Brien. I am Michelle O'Brien. Do hereby solemnly swear, do hereby solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Washington. And will faithfully discharge the duties. And will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Prosser School District Number One Sixteen. Director of Prosser School District Number One Sixteen. In Benton County, the State of Washington. In Benton County, the State of Washington. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Welcome aboard. Thank you. I've learned I'll chuck it a chunk at a little smaller. Okay, here we go. Raise your right hand. I'm Brian Wyman.
I'm Brian Wyman.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Director of the Prosser School District Number One Sixteen. Of Dir- Director of Prosser School District.
Of Director, Prosser School District.
Number One Sixteen.
Number One Sixteen.
In Benton County.
In Benton County.
And the State of Washington.
The State of Washington.
To the best of my ability. Okay, friends. Okay, here we go. I'm learning. I'm getting a little bit better. Thank you for raising your right hand. I'm Frank Vermont.
I'm Frank Vermont.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Director.
Of Director.
Of the Prosser School District Number One Sixteen.
Of the Prosser School District Number One Sixteen.
In Benton County.
In Benton County.
The State of Washington.
The State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Well, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, uh, when we get new board members, we do reorganize the board. Uh, well, I now I will make, uh, or hear calls for nomination for president.
I would nominate Jason Reiner.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to nominate me for president. Uh, all those in favor, well, it's a roll call vote, sorry. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Now, I'll ask for calls for nomination for Vice President.
I nominate Alisa.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to nominate, uh, Lisa Riley as Vice President. This is a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
And I too will vote aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, next up is nomination, uh, we have a, we have a few here that. Uh, as board, we try to be a part of. Uh, one is Thrive, the next one is, uh, the WASDA, uh, representative. So now I will open up for nomination for Thrive Representative.
Give me the explanation what Thrive is.
Love that. Well, I would love to know what the representative does.
Um, so Thrive is a, um, i- it's here because of a, because of grant money, because of our healthy use survey. Their overall goal is to promote healthy activities and for students to abstain from the use of drugs and alcohol. They meet once normally, it's a Thursday morning.
Thursday, twenty eighteen fifteen.
At, um, Bethel Church. And there's community members from all over, plus the folks that work for Thrive. Um, that are, are there trying to cut, you know, working together to, to do things, healthy choices by kids.
The police chief, myself, the Thrive members. The, um, health department, we have school representatives, we have representatives from our migrant population.
Medical community.
Medical community.
Parents.
Parents. There's about a board of, I'm gonna say fifteen people.
But it is a Thursday, usual, uh, Thursday morning, eight fifteen, once a month commitment.
You know what, what Thursday of the month?
I can tell you. But I think it's the first Thursday, cuz I think it's next week.
But did they just move that one because?
Excuse me, it appears to be the second Thursday of the month. At eight fifteen.
Also do things in the community like, um, support drug takeback, medication lock boxes. Different activities that if you've ever seen the, um. The Hidden in Plain Sight presentation, have you ever seen that? That's literally, uh, set up as like a, a bedroom and there's a hundred and some different things, ways that kids can hide. Drugs, paraphernalia, different signs that you would wanna notice if maybe your child was, um, using. Um, so they do different things like that to help, you know, educate parents as well as kids.
I think the other thing that's important, it is a board, they're all, what this, the thought, I believe, and I wish Erica was here. To share, basically, they wanna make sure that they have a full representation from the community of Prosser. So, it's not a school that, I mean, you're representing the school, but it's about making sure that they have enough people at the board. That they're getting a full representation of the community.
Yep.
Do we have any volunteers?
Um, I, I, Thursday mornings would be tough.
And it's like an hour. And then one hour meeting.
I volunteer for that. You'll volunteer? Okay. Well, then I'll nominate Frank Vermont as the, uh, Thrive Representative. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Then, it's been moved and seconded, uh, to nominate, uh, Frank Vermont as the Thrive Representative. This is a roll call vote. Uh, Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
And I too will vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, next up is, uh, calls for nomination for the WASDA Representative. Uh, this is something that I've done in the past, or I am currently doing. Um, ninety-nine point nine percent of it is via Zoom. Um, but there is a. Oh, there's a networking hour, uh, that's on a Zoom like once a month. Um, I haven't been very good at making those, but, um, at least this fall. But, uh, uh, then once a year, they do a. Uh, what is the thing?
Annual conference.
Annual con- WASDA Annual Conference where, um. You represent us as, as, um, on the, the WASDA legislative thing. We can go through and do a bunch of voting and you read, they got like a hundred proposals that. Um, usually present to the board and we can go through them or trust you in your, in your vote, so. I would be eager if one of you would.
I'd be happy to do that.
Perfect. Then I will nominate Michelle as a WASDA Representative.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Um, Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
And I too will vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on, uh, to introductions of the Prosser School District Administrator.
So I'm super excited to welcome you and, um, I have an amazing team here to introduce themselves and, um. Let you hear from them. So, to everybody, whoever would like to start first, Jody, you brought the presents, you start.
I am the principal at Heights Elementary School, so we're super excited and welcomed. And I look forward to having you come tour my school. You have a beautiful new school, so just let me know. Call the office, I'll do a tour.
Awesome.
Show me where that pool is gonna go.
Sure.
Okay, I'm Crystal Cole, I'm the Assistant Principal at Housen, and we do not have a shiny new school. And, but you are welcome in our building anytime, we're really excited to have you.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Morrow, I'm the Police Service Director. Welcome to the school board. I'd like to invite you, come anytime to the school, I'll serve breakfast all night.
Thank you.
I may be took transportation buses. I'm gonna sneak out with you cuz I got three AM still wired.
Thank you.
David Buck, Assistant Principal here at the high school. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kevin Gellman, Principal at Wistron Elementary School, our building is always open.
Except for actually, it's locked all the time.
It's always locked unless you're permitted to come in.
It, we can open it for you, but.
I actually did get locked out of your building at your ribbon cutting ceremony. Check out the playground and couldn't get back in and everyone left.
I'm Jackson Hogg, the new district athletic director. We have first home game for league this Saturday, so I'd better see everyone there.
Eric Ryan is now the Director of Migrant and bilingual Education. And did you have any questions and concerns? The door is always open.
Thank you.
Michael Danny, I'm the Principal at Housen Middle School, and echo what Crystal said, um, welcome aboard and we'd love to have you at school anytime you wanna come out by.
Thank you.
Sean Cook, Technology Director for the district. Uh, my, in my signature line of my email is all my contact information, both my cell phone number and my office number and my email, should you have any questions. Uh, I'm welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Rick Ball, Career and Technical Education Director. Anytime you wanna come and visit our CTE programs and see what's going on, please do.
Brad Bailey, High School Principal.
Thank you.
I'm Jesse Wilson, Kira of the elementary principal. And, um, you ever need a good little smile or laugh? Okay, twos are pretty fun.
Thank you all so much for coming. Um, I want you to know that we, um, will introduce ourselves when we do our reports this evening. But, um, we're working really hard on open communication and some transparent work. And we are going to strive for regular visits in our building and our classrooms. Um, you are always welcome. For some reason, there's a misnomer is what I would call it. Um, you don't need an announcement, you don't need an appointment, you are welcome in our buildings at any time. Um, we, um, have a protocol for guests and visitors and so forth. You will be getting a badge and, and some different pieces so that they know that you're part of our team, but we're excited to have you in our system.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And you are all excused to go home. They're all like, uh, can we leave now?
Don't run too fast. And, um, so we have, uh, student board reps. Noah is, has been, uh, board rep for us for the last couple of years, so that's Noah Dempsey. I know. Um, we also have Caitlin Morrow and Yoshimi, Yoshimi Garcia.
Yoshimi's, um, at her night class at YVC and Caitlin is.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else could be? Again, Joanne Groenavell, she's a teacher. All right. All right, so we'll resume the meeting. Uh, now I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and saying to approve of the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries. Um, informational item number one, uh, Prosser School District EPO and capital levy resolutions.
So I just basically want, um, we've approved the resolutions, I put them back on here. As new board members, I felt it was important for you to have your eyes on them and understand what the resolutions are. Um, many of you have already been involved and have done your research, I've met with each of you individually. Um, they're just here for your information purposes. Um, we are running and depending on your age in the room, you might call it an MNO levy. Um, and modern terminology is EPNO levy, Educational Programs and Operations Levy. Um, that is a replacement levy. We're asking, um, while we ask for a dollar amount, we are estimating that tax obligation from our community. To be approximately two dollars per thousand. And then our second resolution is for a capital levy. We did, um. Wanna make sure in our capital levy that people understand the capital levy has a list of potential items. And the community will have a big part in say. Um, obviously, things such as a roof or safety would come before other things. Those things are smaller, but the capital levy is, uh, and both levies, excuse me, are for four years. Our goal with the four-year levy was that we wouldn't have to go to our, our community, you know, like every eighteen months or so, asking for money again. And so we're shooting for a four-year levy for both of them. And so they're just there for your information and I wanted to make sure we were really transparent to not only our community, but to our new board.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, Slaya, do we have any? Any, uh, anybody signing in?
She didn't hear you.
Kevin?
Is there anybody signed in?
Okay. And I'm assuming nobody's raised their hand online. Okay, so we'll skip that and move on to student representative report.
Feels like I'm. Um, I actually don't have much to report. Uh, winter sports started, um, basketball, girls' basketball in Hermiston last night. Um, wrestling right now is in somewhere that's not here. And. Second trimester started at the high school, or maybe just why I don't know how to do it. Um, and so everyone got new classes, still getting those figured out. The lines for the counselors at the high school are tremendously long, um, especially with one, uh, counselor who's not here, so. I think everyone's handling it as well as.
I do wanna, on behalf of the middle school, I met with the middle school, like we had said that we were going to, I met with them last week. And we have some really fun things, um, that they are wanting to share the story from the middle school. About the stuff that is going on and they're going to run a little social media ad and an ad in the newspaper. And start telling the story from the student voice. Um, it's a little different than a voice on a, on a board, right? But we're going to try and share their message and their voice in a different way, so they're very excited to do that.
Awesome. Thanks, Sean. Uh, moving on to action items, so the action item number one is the first reading of policy and procedure. Forty-two eighteen, which is language access and.
That's his coat, so he's not gone.
I knew he didn't leave, he knew he was on.
So, we're at the first reading of language acquisition policy. And so, we did add one thing in your packet that is different from the original piece that you put in for. The work session. And that was the addition of parent square, parent square is actually called out in there as a. So, are there any other questions I can answer in regards to this policy? Other than what we've already discussed at the work session.
Would you mind giving our new board members kind of a rundown of what a language, um. Access policy is in just a summation?
Sure. So, it's required, yeah, we have a policy on hand that explains to the community. How we communicate with the entire community in whatever language they speak. So it doesn't matter whether it's in Spanish, or Mandarin, or Swahili, or Farsi. It is the. We've got a new thing of the LGA for the school district. Anywhere in the state to provide. Access to any of our communications in whatever language, whatever home language they have. I'm not sure if you guys have ventured onto the OSPI website. Um, there, any of their documents are translatable into tons and tons of different languages. Even our own website. On the top right-hand side, there's a translate button that you can press and you can select which language you need. To be able to read our communications in. And so this is just, uh, it falls under civil rights and accessibility. So, this policy coming forward before you is so that we can have a full-scale policy and procedure on how we do business and people can. Access that.
So is this a change from how we currently do it, or just kind of documenting our?
This is a, this is a formal documentation of what we do.
And for clarification, um, when a policy comes before the board, we usually see it in a work session. We can, it comes out of work session as a first reading, which we're at today. And then we, uh, i- if it gets moved on from here, it goes on to the second final reading and proceeding at our next regular meeting or something. Thank you. Any questions for Eric? Thank you, Eric, I appreciate it.
All right.
I'll ask for a motion, uh, to approve first reading of policy and procedure forty-two eighteen.
I move to approve the first reading of policy and procedure forty-two eighteen.
I'll second it. It's been moved and saying to approve first reading of policy and procedure forty-two eighteen, language access. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries. All right, next up is out-of-state travel request for boys and girls basketball.
Want to just come forward?
There he is.
Yeah.
That wasn't a table the last time, but now we did this just for you.
We got an official table.
So to, to, in front of you and in your board packet is the actual contract. Um, you wanna tell them how that happened from the study session till now and kind of what you reached out to them.
So we had to get a contingency on the contract, uh, to make sure we have enough non-league games next season. Cuz we have more teams, uh, than numbers of students in schools. I think that's coming out in December or January, so right now we have eight non-league contests we can do. And that might go down, and so we had to put in the contract that it's only signed in, uh, valid if we have enough non-seasonal games.
So, me, and maybe a little back further is that, that our boys and girls basketball, varsity basketball teams were invited.
Yes.
To come to this tournament and it's a year away and they're asking so early because they have to raise funds.
And I think the important part here is, um, we strive to not back ourselves into a corner. So we didn't wanna say yes. And then the league changes it to six games and now we can't go and then we have a fee or a fine or, or, you know, we're obligated in some way. So that was the reason that it's been adjusted.
Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, so I'm sorry, the. The contract's contingent upon us having at least three non-league games, is that what I'm reading? And what was it before?
The contract?
Previously, it was a different number, you said?
No, it was just a contract we signed in.
Oh.
But we had to put that in, right?
Okay.
There, there was no.
There was no.
No contingent upon, and so we felt that that was very important. Because we would play at least three ga- or minimum of three games there?
Three games there, and we didn't wanna sign a contract and commit to it and have to back out. So this way we let them know it was contingent on the.
And, and the classifications are, are changing, and so the number of teams in our league is gonna change next year, so he, they're just trying to pre- preempt any issues. So there could be so many teams in the league next year that if they go through and play them, they wouldn't have three league, um, non-league games available. And so, if they can't, maybe there's only two non-league games you can play, they wouldn't be able to go. So that's kind of the issue. Right now, it wouldn't be a problem. But next year, it, numbers change and, yeah.
Timing wise, when, when will we know that? Any reclassification?
The, the T, they've actually done the reclassification, but you, you know, the teams get to opt down, opt up, so.
Based on our free and reduced numbers and all that.
That's just, uh, I'm not really into that, but that's what I've been told, is that it would come out finalized in December or January.
I don't predict it till about January fifteen.
Okay.
With the holidays in December, I don't predict seeing it till about January fifteen. We have numbers that are due to the CWAC based on our free and reduced lunch and a bunch of different stuff, so we have to have that. And then they have time, have to have time to.
Any other questions?
It's, uh, sorry, is the cost being fundraised or?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve out-of-state travel?
Uh, motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Been moved and saying to approve out-of-state travel, uh, for boys and girls basketball. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries. Next up.
Thank you, guys.
I'll be in touch.
Okay, thanks.
Next up is out-of-state travel for Prosser FFA land evaluation team.
Yes.
Right.
First, I wanna say that Prosser FFA's had a tremendous following. Up the Yakima, that's a fortunate state, they took first with their educational display, which was tremendous. Uh, tractor drivers took sixth, um, and, and the competition, and that one's a, that, that's a very tight competition. Like you have to have perfect scores in just about every section of that, to even get in the top ten, and then they have different tiebreakers. So that, that's, you know, that was tremendous. And then, of course, state soils. They won state soils, and so they qualified for nationals, we had five kids in the, in the top, uh, top ten. And Steve said that that was a really tight contest, uh, from top, from the top eight teams. That it was like twenty points separated up from bottom or something like that. And so they qualified for nationals, which is in Oklahoma City every year. And they'll leave, um. They'll leave about April twenty-seventh and come be back on May fifth. There's two or three days of practice days at the pits and then they actually have the actual contest. We're not sure yet, we're still researching, um, what's gonna be the best plan, we might drive, might drive back. Or we might fly back. I've known chapters that have, that have done it both. There's advantages to both. Um, they don't really lose any more school time. And the, the advantage of driving back is you get a, you get a kind of sample of different soils and different textures and, and different landforms along the way. And, and it makes it a bit more of an experience for the, for the, for the two. And then it'll be, it'll be funded by a combination of fundraising at the Valley of Night Oceans and CTE funds.
Who gets to drive with all of them all the way back to Oklahoma?
And not me.
I, I've known, I've known advisors who have done it.
I've heard about it a few times.
They take, uh, like a bus or?
No, they would take the suburban. We checked with Amy and we're gonna have one available and if we decide to fly, we'll pass it.
How many qualified?
Five.
Nice.
Yeah, you, with, uh, the T, a T of five is.
Go. Go.
And we did have this high individual, um, uh. Molly Peters, she had a perfect score. But she wasn't on team one, she was on the team two, which placed third.
Hey, I don't see her name on there.
Yeah. So there's a good chance, and we, yeah, there's a good chance that. So there's a good chance, and we, yeah, there's a good chance that I keep going back next year.
Great news. Any other questions for Ray?
Exactly fundraising, it looks like I'm seeing there's fundraising for that, right? Or where's the money coming from?
Money?
The money, it's going to come from FFA fundraising, FFA alumni and CTE. And whatever doesn't get made up, CTE makes it.
Okay.
Will entertain a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve it. I'm going to say it, out of state travel. Prosser FFA land evaluation team.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve out of state travel for process, Prosser FFA land evaluation team. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Ray.
Well, thank you. I'll let Stephen know. Have a great night. Once again, anytime you guys want to come through.
Thank you.
Pretty many show them all your fancy toys.
That's right. Okay, moving on is the program services agreement for. Ready for kindergarten.
So Ready for Kindergarten is a program that's been around for a really long time. The, uh, Kennewick School District has been doing it for years. Um, it is kind of expensive, uh, but what the program is, is a program for parents of kids that are under five. That have not yet entered kindergarten, and they do a series of three, um. And le- lesson sessions, English and Spanish for families. And then a lot of the cost comes from manipulative, so like they teach them math games, different reading strategies. Things with like letter recognition, and they provide them all the manipulative and the, the support materials. That they need to help their kids learn those things at home. Um, and, um. We, you know, currently are in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had just over sixteen percent of our kindergartners came in ready for kindergarten. So we think, wow, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight thousand dollars is a lot, but we pay way more than that over time. For kids who are behind, start out behind and continue to be behind through reading and math intervention. Through maybe many years of their time in school. This is our first time doing it. Eric and I, um, the migrant by legal department and title one, we're splitting the cost. Um, we're going to try it and see if it helps. Um, yeah. I think parents send their kids, I think parents do the best they can with their kids with what they know. And, um, this just helps parents to have a better understanding of what kids do need to get them ready for kinder. Um, our teachers will be trained to be the instructors, and so then we'll be able to offer it with our instructor, with our own instructors in the future.
So. Is there a limit to how many kids can participate in the program?
So it's parents and kids, but yeah, there is, um, it's like two, it'll be two classes. So an English class and a Spanish class and, and don't quote me, I have to go back and look at the contract, but I think it's like twenty families each. On each side.
So the, so the parents are being kind of taught what to do with their.
Yes, we, the parents learn, um, so like, you know, there's simple things that parents can do that you don't need anything for. You know, singing in the car, looking for colors and shapes when you're driving, counting, doing the alphabet, things like that. But the, this gives them more skills. Kindergarten, I, I tell people kindergarten's not naps and snacks anymore. When we went to school, like you had, you took a rug, you took a nap. There was somebody was in charge of snack. Um, it's just not that way anymore. They have to have certain readiness in math, certain readiness in. In reading, certain readiness, social emotionally with their, um, you know, their finger dexterity, all kinds of different things. And parents, if they don't know, they wouldn't know how to help, help their kids be ready. So that's what this class is all about. So this, like I said, that we've been talking, I've talked to them several times over the last several years. Um. But I, we just see more and more like our ki- we have to help get our kids, our kids come into school more ready for school. Um, so they aren't starting out behind, um. If we can have kids come in ready and we aren't spending time catching up, they can just push on from, from where they are. And that's just not happening. And in some years, our, our numbers are higher, um, for readiness. But, but tw- twenty, for the start of the twenty-two school year, the numbers aren't out for twenty-three yet. It was sixteen point three percent. Kids were ready in all six areas.
That also is part of our transitional kindergarten program. So we have a TK program for our four-year-olds, so they, that is also a part of having them ready for kindergarten. So it's a, it's a well-rounded, um, part that we're doing in. And also if we can get. Uh, a family who potentially has their first child going into kindergarten ready. When child number two or three comes around, they have the skill set ready for the next children in their family. So it's something that we hope can continue to give back to the community as well.
I actually would like to just like meet them at the hospital when the baby is born, maybe before. Um, but I'm working with the hospital and the library so that we can.
We really are, that is true.
It's true, prepare some materials to help parents. Um, I know that when babies are born now, I know this because of my kids. Um, they're, um, and my grandkids, they, they get a, like a card in the mail every certain number of months. Saying this is what your child is supposed to know and be able to do. Um, so we're hoping to do some things that we can hand them, you know, books to read, you know, things to do, counting all the, just a one page. If something's simple, these are the things to do with your kids to help them.
And how to reach out to us and to the Prosser School District, what do you need from us?
Yeah.
To help you if being in your role as a parent.
That's one of the reasons the state's putting so much money into early learning, like transitional kindergarten E cap. We have two E cap preschool classes in the district because kids need help to get ready. Families need help.
I have a couple of questions, um, in the. In the, whatever the. The very first page of E, where you're defining what it is, it says it's twenty-eight thousand. Your second page has twenty-eight thousand, but the additional costs are another, an additional.
So this is the quote from them, we're not doing that additional part, we're only doing that part, top part.
Okay.
So that was an, that's, I mean, it's an option, but we, we're not, there's this whole separate cell workshop. Cell stands for social emotional learning that they do just as a standalone only with four-year-olds, I think. And we opted because of the cost, just, we're going to try the, the ready for kinder series and see, see how that goes first. And make a decision where we want to add that additional part.
Um, my next question is. So we've got the transitional kindergarten program and that serves how many kids?
Uh, we have thirty-six kids, eighteen at, at Wood Street and eighteen at River View.
And is the E cap is separate?
E cap is thirty-six more kids.
Okay.
And that's actually run through the E S D, but in our facilities and with our kids.
And then this will serve another.
This could be some of those families too, like it could be parents that choose to come from that, but these are families could have. You know, the kids for kids, zero to five, not yet in kinder.
Um, how does it, how does this work? How does, how do, what does Prosser School District do? And the reason I ask is under the contract, it said that, um. Oh, C, uh, Children Reading Foundation of Mid Columbia is going to provide curriculum materials.
Right.
But all curriculum materials need to be approved by the board prior.
It's the kids that go home with the families for them to do their at-home learning. So that's what the majority of the cost is. We do have staffing costs, obviously with a contract. But they get their little, like one night is around math and they get their kid of math, math things to do at home games and things to their kids.
Question.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Again, curriculum approval, when you approve curriculum, you're approving curriculum for, i- if it's a core curriculum for the district. This isn't core curriculum.
That's what, that was my question. So this is going to be a completely separate program. We're just going to.
It's an add-on and these are kids that may not even be in school. Well, they're kids that are in school. They could be in E cap or in TK, but. Um, it's for those young families.
And when would this start?
We're, our, our plan is to do, we're trying to do it kind of in the winter. Because families, when you get to spring, might be working and might be harder. So like, uh, over a series of about six or seven weeks, like every other week, do the three. They do also do it where they do it like one in the fall, one in the winter and in the spring. We find with our families, fall and spring is too busy. So we're going to try to do like January, February and get all of them done in that amount of time.
Um, can, can we put on that, can we get like an update, say late spring when the program's completed?
We can even, um, when, when we have, once this is approved and we set the dates, I'll invite you to come see it. It'll be an evening, you can come and just watch.
But we could, we'd love, we'll give you, uh, um, so let's make some notes. We'll give you the data of how many different families, if they already have children in our school, if they were in TK, we can get some different data. I think that's great.
Good.
Do you know if there's some data available on this program that shows its effectiveness?
It's, there is, I can get it from Ready, uh, they've, they have had bear gets success, the Kennewick has been doing it. They literally are housed in Kennewick because they have been, they do hundreds of families in Kennewick, hundreds of families. So again, uh, it's around participation and those kids coming in. It's not testing the kids that are going. Mom and dad are going, so we're going to give your kid a test. But they've had good success with improving their readiness for kindergarten since they.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Is there numbers from Kennewick?
I'm sure I can get information from them, for sure.
And on OSPI's Washington State report card, one of the things is kindergarten readiness. And so you could look at Kennewick's kindergarten readiness number compared to ours.
Yep.
And that would be able to wait, and we could even go back as far as, I don't know, fifteen, six.
Years before and after.
That's what I'm saying. So we might be able to go back to fourteen, fifteen or fifteen, sixteen and see what their.
I think they've, they haven't been doing it a lot, they've been doing it a long time.
But I'm out to see if we can find some numbers prior to and after. Can certainly ask that.
Think Eric can.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the E S D one twenty-three also uses the same program. And for the migrant education program. And they actually go into the different homes, almost it's via E S D one twenty-three. It's been a large success, so it's not just Kennewick, but also Binley and some of those. Uh, out outskirts of different buildings in those districts as well. So we can also gather information and data from E S D as well to bring.
So Kennewick's, um, ready, ready for kindergarten number in twenty-two was thirty-eight point five percent, about twenty-two percent higher than us.
What's the strategy on how to get people to attend these meetings?
Um, so a part of, it's, it's recruiting families, honestly, because once, when they commit, they need to come to all three. So we'll have to do i- invitation, advertisement, and we get them signed up, um, to attend. So we can use family nights, different things like that, but they have to have those kids that are not in school yet. And you get, you have to get the families to commit to the full series. So there's definitely some work we have to do without, we'll do primarily through the out, parents and the elementaries. Our social media, sending out, you know, notices to families.
Probably family practice, doctors, programs.
Yeah.
But in all joking but serious, feed them and they will come.
Yeah, and we do, we will feed them, and Eric will do, will do recruitment out here, his, his pack meeting is pack meeting coming up.
Our special education night.
Yep, so those kind of events where families are already partic- you know, are coming, those are good places to get families to come.
What's the capacity? How many can we have?
I think it's tw- I think it's twenty and twenty, twenty in Spanish, twenty in English, but it might be twenty-five. But I, I ha- I don't remember.
My, or like, so what, what, what's our current enrollment for a kindergarten?
One seventy-four, yeah, is that right?
Right now, oh, with TK, one thirty-eight.
Oh, sorry, one thirty-eight.
Total in the district?
Mm-hmm.
So I'll remember. Can reach forty?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so, uh, we, the original quote they gave me was over a hundred thousand dollars. Because that's for like two hundred families. And I'm like, we can do that much. So we scaled it back to one class of each because we have to start somewhere. And, um, keeping in mind, we do have luckily, even of our, um, our kids that we have in kindergarten now. We had kids in E cap last year, we had one TK last year. Um, we don't see those numbers yet because they're not in, in the report card yet. But we have to start somewhere, and this is what we could, felt like we could, if we start with it, start with the one group of each. And then see how successful it is, and if we, if it's really successful and we can get families there, then we work to find more money so we can do more.
So in the contract, it says, uh. Fifteen English and.
There you go.
Spanish per age group, zero to three.
It could be twenty-five total. And the, probably the reason behind that is, and you are. The families are representing more than one child. So, yeah, it's expensive, twenty-five total.
It does, it seems expensive to me.
It is, it's expensive, and a lot of the expense, so we do have the staff cost, staff cost is some expense. But for, for three nights, it's not huge. We do have to pay for some training, but it's the materials. So the other thing is, is if we train our folks and we, you know. Uh, they're a foundation, they're nonprofit, but I, you know, they're still trying to pay their people. So is there something that, is there things that we can do? Cause we've done family readiness nights before on our own. We, they actually, the E S D purchased the kits for us, so there was still a cost and they were relatively expensive, but we didn't have to pay for it. We did it last year, so, um, we haven't seen it yet. So we want to, we want to, we, I mean, we need them, they're the experts, so we need some experts to come in and help us. With doing it ourselves and see how, how it goes.
These kits aren't reusable.
No, you give them to the family so they can do it at home. Yeah, it's the idea is they're taking it home so that they are. Doing those things with their kids and playing the games and singing a song.
Is there a sample of this kit or?
I can get one.
Okay.
Would, uh.
There's actually three, cause there's one for each night, different.
Okay.
So the, our staff members that are attending this, right? Um, they will be paid out a title one and migrant?
It's, it's part of all of.
It's just the including, okay, so there is no basic ed funding, so.
No, grant funding.
Oh, uh, what's the timeframe to get this completed?
Tell me more about it.
Like if, if, if we were to table this to the next first meeting in December.
The longer, so if you wait, if you can, if you wait, um, it just is me getting on their schedule. And the longer, if we wait longer, so we originally, we, we, I've been working with them for a while. There was a kind of a glitch, um, in, in the, there was a payment that went out that should, I don't even know what happened. Anyway, um, so we kind of started over from scratch. It voided that payment. Um, it's just getting on their calendar. We need the contract to get on their calendar. And, um.
If you.
But, yeah, I mean, if you want more information.
And you want to see what it looks like.
Yeah.
Then that's, that's what we do.
Yeah, that, that's really not a problem.
We could bring them to the December. And thirteen.
I think it's thirteen.
Thirteenth meeting. And table it till then.
I agree. I'd like to see the materials and also like to see the timeline, like, okay, this is when we think the meetings will be. And this is our, you know, our ad campaign or, you know, how we're going to reach people and that we're going to start January first. I'd hate to see like information go out, you know, five days before it's going to happen, and then we have a low turnout.
No, we, we can't do that. We have to have the fa- the families have to be signed up and committed, and then it's calling and reminding, it's, yeah, there's a whole process.
Well, I think we have, um. Uh, I just need a motion if we're going to approve it or if we're going to table it till the next meeting for more information.
I would motion to table it to the next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to table the program services agreement to our next regular meeting in December. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign, motion carries.
No problem.
You have every, the notes.
I do.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to vouchers. Is there any questions on vouchers? Other than mine?
I think it's important that you, so that you can kind of model what you do.
Okay.
But you know what I mean? I think it's important for them to understand kind of.
Now I gotta remember what I do with them now. I can't remember what the check number is, but Barnes and Noble, I'll get to it. Uh, can you explain, um, that invoice please?
Yeah, so Barnes and Noble is a forty-seven thousand dollar invoice. And these are all novel book sets, uh, for the new ELA adoption here at the high school.
So to explain what a novel set adoption is, so if, um. I know this is not one, but, so don't kick me under the table, but if we're going to read To Kill a Mockingbird, right? Then we need to be able to have the book To Kill a Mockingbird for each student to be able to read it. So a novel set, that's what it means.
So like for each grade, there was eight.
Eight novel sets per grade.
You're buying two, in the high school, we have two hundred plus kids a grade, so that's a lot of books.
So that was sixteen hundred books for ninth grade, sixteen hundred books.
Yeah.
Give or take.
So that each student gets a book to take home?
Yeah, to read during the time and then.
That is library, so once we buy that novel set within good progress, it's in the inventory. So that's that room right back behind there, right there. So that's that room right back behind there, right there. You can go back and see all the novel sets, that big with all the novels.
So my eight sets of books for the um, the program we're buying. How, how many?
Sixteen hundred books.
Sixteen hundred bucks.
It's a lot of.
So my question is, is for each grade level, there's not English happening in every, well, I guess they gotta take them.
They have to have English out, yeah, in four years.
Seems like a lot of books.
It is a lot of books. And our English teachers counted them all, so.
Perfect. Um, my next question is nine zero eight four four zero, it's an Amazon, um. And it's for the HMS wrestling team, a wrestling program.
So I probably wanted me to give you a hard time, but it was actually B S N sports.
Or B S N.
On Amazon. Um, but yeah, so that.
I think I got that, I, I must've been right.
Was, and we were like looking through every Amazon line item, we're like, there's no wrestling cream on your one, talking about. Um, so wrestling cream um, is technically an allowable expense under A S B. Um, but typically these kinds of sporting supplies are paid out of the extracurricular general fund budget.
Which is ultimately levy dollars that we've been talking about.
Wrestling cream, Michael, keep off the fungus. Yeah.
I don't have any issue with the cream uh, in concept or in use, cause I think it's very important. I just think, you know, we had this discussion, I don't even, was it last week, two weeks ago? Uh, when you presented the year end financials, um, our A S B funds continue to have. They continue to build money. Um, I, I think it should, it, we should start looking at pulling some of this out of A S B versus.
So.
And I'm smiling because we had a meeting this week at the middle school. About, um, and we'll be having it with high schools as well. We just did middle schools this week about what is, so. Um, with your permission, Mr. Day, I can explain that. Um, so for example, middle school A S B girls soccer. Example had six thousand dollars in it. I'm like, so that's just an example. And so then we were paying officials and we're doing different things. Well. A S B money, so I want you to think both, all of you have had children in school, so I want you to think about it. If you. Take the Chuck or Cherries thing home and you spend a hundred dollars on Chuck or Cherries, that money should be spent by the. It, within reason, by the student who raised the hundred dollars. And that was what our question was. So one of the things that we talked about is those athletic accounts. Um, need to be spent on the athletics of the year that it earns the money, very much like what Mr. Cox said. Uh, Coach Cox said tonight about those kids are earning it for their trip to Juneau. You hear about people who travel abroad, right? And they, for their freshman year and their sophomore year, and then their junior, senior year, they go to Spain, right? So they work towards it. That's the purpose of A S B funds. And so that's what we're tackling.
Okay.
That's what we're tackling. Um, I did talk to a neighboring district about today specifically at eleven o'clock for about a half an hour. About what is considered A S B, um. Some districts called it athletic reserves, some people call it A S B gates, right? That money then is for the uniforms that the students wear, the rotation of that money, but the. Levy dollars, we were just at a levy meeting talking about levy dollars for extracurricular and athletics. What does that do? That should cover our salaries, our transportation and our officials, the root things that it takes to run your programs. Um, and then the gates and the things that are community sponsors there are for. Our uniforms. The only thing that's an exception to that that we came up with was safety. Helmets and a few of those safety items need to be planned in an athletic budget that. Jackson would take care of. So I think you're on to something and I heard you loud and clear. So I had the. Middle school meeting last week and we have the high school meeting, I think, next week.
I do, fungus cream is a basic necessity of.
That almost could be a safety one.
Does it ever go bad?
Well, I have to tell you a funny, um, forever and ever, I went to make a pumpkin pie. And you know, you use the va- uh, canned milk in your pumpkin pie and I pulled it off the shelf and I flipped it over and I said, Dad, do you think we should use evaporated milk from two thousand eighteen? He says, let me give me a buck, why don't you go buy some more evaporated? So sometimes we don't want to use things that are expired. But yes.
I got one better and I'll say it. Um, any other questions? Thank you for, for getting that information.
So to our new board members, if that's what, that's what we put these vouchers out to you, when you get it ahead of time. We welcome the questions if you can email them, cause sometimes we just don't know off the cuff. It takes as we go pull the printed copy, who signed for it, what is, any type of headway you can give us. Speak, but we're really happy to be transparent in your, in your responses. We like to answer them in open. Um, for him so that anybody in the public can hear that. But if you give us a heads up, we can, we can be a little more prepared.
Maybe not two hours before the meeting.
Uh, we did it, we still go.
Have one question, uh, check nine zero eight four nine seven, um, Matt Jackson law firm for seventy-eight twenty-five. Is that for litigation costs or what?
It, he, that's our attorney. I don't want to use the word litigation, but I would say attorney fees. And if you also, the, our other attorney is Foster Garvey.
Or it was just one of the names.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on vouchers?
I had one. Oh, go ahead.
I was looking at the big ones that stick out. Maybe you just give me a real quick rundown, what vendor, or the um, American Reading Company?
Uh, those are more books.
That's, that's our curriculum, our middle school, uh, curriculum that we just adopted. So there's. When you, our adoption overall is. Somewhere in. Uh, probably, we probably spent about eight hundred thousand dollars on elementary, middle school is probably closer to four to four hundred thousand. It's expensive, so those are big checks.
And then, um, nine zero eight four seven five, Graduation Alliance.
Uh, so that is what we pay um, for our virtual students and our fourteen eighteen. Um, credit, credit retrieval, I guess, not open doors, credit retrieval, students. So it's, it's basically, it's basically a pass through, so we get to count those students on our um, P two two three. Uh, and then the funding that we get basically is just paid out to, to Grad Alliance. We keep a very small percentage of it.
Makes sense.
Is that the cost for the year, the trimester?
Um, so that's a cost for three months. We were, we were questioning a bunch of their numbers and so that's for September, October and November. It's about like thirty-five grand a month.
Maybe at a work session coming up, we could review, I know we have several different credit retrieval programs. And I know, it's certainly important, but I feel like some of these are duplicative.
Um, I, uh, uh, board member Riley, I have to agree with you, um, in the respect that. Um. It feels very similar in terminology. As a matter of fact, Mr. Funk and I sat and we had a. Chalkboard meeting where we actually drew lines, did and understood. And I'd be happy to have that with you because I think it is very important to understand. We use the word Graduation Alliance quite easily and, and then we use the word um, credit retrieval. Have all these different programs and so Graduation Alliance gets. Um, used openly, but it does serve us three different groups of students.
I would, I would like that, thank you.
Like Kleenex. Yeah.
Maybe we can do that at the December work session.
Yep, December indoor, January, depending on time. I'll like send them in agenda out and you can kind of choose which ones you think are the most important.
We have a question.
That's all I have.
Lisa, did you have any others?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers.
We'll hear a second.
Sorry, go.
Been moved and second to approve the vouchers. Any other discussion? During none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And that's it for action items, moving on to the consent items. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
So when I spoke with each of you, I want to make sure you understand what the consent agenda is. These are items that we see regularly. Um, how else would you explain them? They're often. Normal operations of business.
Yeah.
Routine business.
Routine, oh, thank you, that's a good word, routine business. And that's why it's grouped together. And at any point, you can ask to have them separated, but generally they're reviewed as a, as a group.
We hear a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and saying to approve consent agenda, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, that concludes. Uh, the consent times, moving on to reports, Delise.
Um, okay, so the only thing I have tonight is the student enrollment, uh, report for November. Um, but we are up six. Um, kiddos from October, we had um, twenty-two enrollments and sixteen withdrawals. Um, and then, um, so that puts our over budget number of forty-eight, so we're still over what we budgeted, which is awesome. Uh, we did include some new, a new graph, um, and a new set of numbers. Just for some more information. And this graph isn't exactly what I, I want it to be. Um, so it's just an example. Um, but Kim and I have kind of went round and round on this, cause we want to be. As transparent as possible, and I know that it can get super confusing with all the pass-throughs and our running starts and our credit retrievals and. Um, and so we, um. This, on the, I think it's the third page, um. The, where the November twenty twenty-three enrollment graph is along with the um, numbers on top. We typically don't give the numbers on top, we will put it in that, that line graph, uh, but. But for this year, it's just kind of nice to see the actual numbers and see how they flow. Um, and so, um. We are including TK, so you can see that up top, um, and then all of the grades and then also, um. On the very bottom, we're also including our open doors or credit retrieval kids as well. Um, and so.
And I want to tell you what my dream was. And I'm a pretty good Excel user and I just can't get it to quite tweak what I want it to be. My goal was the blue bar at the top was our total enrollment. And then, um, we're gonna get it where you see. Like TK, you know, is this segment down here and then your first grade and then second grade, so you can see what makes. What percentage makes up the whole graph and I just, of the whole bar graph, and I just can't quite tweak it to do what I want. But I promise that's what my goal will be. I want you to see what percentage. So I think we see, I'm gonna use Graduation Alliance as an example. That expenditure for that eleven students or that twenty-one students, right? I want you to see that, what that expenditure is and what that number of students is. We spend a lot of time sometimes focusing on. The seven or the eleven students and we don't see the two hundred that are in the middle. So my goal with that graph was that. The other part that we wanted you to see was the number it, coming in and going out. Each building provides us. With a named list of. Who's leaving and where they went. So we had a couple of families move, like three families moved out of state. Right? So we know that they've moved. And when three families move, sometimes that's nine, ten, eleven kids, right? So they left and then we have where they're, who's coming in, what are they coming from, where did they move from? So we have all that data that's available to you because of public records. We don't put out the names, we just wanted you to have the numbers. It's working really hard so that our community knows that we're bringing people in and things are going well. Um, and also you will get the information going out if it's an actual dropout. So, does that make sense? So we won't tell you they're leaving, we will tell you they're dropping out. So leaving means we know where they're going. Does that make sense? It's not a senior who says, I'm checking out, I'm not gonna go. So when we say they're leaving, we know where they went. Okay? Anything else that you, cause we really are striving, the bar graph, the line graph, excuse me, that, that's been seen for a long time. Showed a trend for years, so you could see where we were at in our enrollment over time. But I thought that we needed to get really more granular in the numbers that we had. So I felt that was important.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Maybe I have one question and, um. I'm looking at the enrollment and then in the breakdown, it has twenty-one, we have twenty-two total. Uh, twenty-one is new to district, but we have one under the homeschool line. How does that work?
So, um, so enrollment, we had one kid who was homeschooled.
Oh, that kid.
They came back and then we also had one. Uh, go into homeschool.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're not the same student.
But I didn't figure was, but I couldn't figure why, how you accounted for that. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And for those that are new to the board, we have to account for our homeschool students. We have to report. And there's forms that we fill out and so forth, so.
What's the Graduation Alliance, the five, what does that signify?
Graduation. But Graduation Alliance is like the easiest explanation is it's online school. It's our provider for online school.
And some of the students are taking a class at the high school. Like one period a day because they have a credit retrieval class. Maybe they're a junior and they have to retrieve freshman English, let's say. So they're taking that class here in this building. Some are full-time online. And some are doing. And then some are doing split. So a part of a day here and part online, yeah.
So if they, so that's a withdrawal if they move to online class?
Nope, no. But it is. So this is where it gets confusing. We have five, we have actually seven entities in our district. So they're moving out of P H S and into Graduation Alliance.
It's super confusing.
That's why you just wait till the study section.
But it really is.
It might still be confusing.
I, I've been doing this for nineteen years and some days I have to sit down the pencil, walk around the building and come back and look at it because. It is very difficult sometimes when you are trying to manage. The, the pieces and how we have to report it to the state.
And I think, uh, Delise, you might have mentioned it, Graduation Alliance. It's almost a push through, so there are still a student of Proster School District. So we get those dollars from the state and whatever else, but it's almost just like a flow through into Graduation Alliance and we keep a small.
It's such a. Kids that are going full-time, yeah.
Small, small percentage. For basically writing the check.
Similar to running start in that way.
Yeah.
Uh, Deanna.
Just a couple of things, um, I will be emailing you the school improvement plans. Soon into this week, beginning of next week, end of this week.
Yes.
Yes, into this week, just waiting for a little financial page, Delise is learning that part, so. I'm also sending our district what's called an L cap, um, our district LEA plan. And then, um, still working on the science adoption committee, we're gonna be working, starting our six through twelve. Science adoption, we actually tried to do this before COVID. There really weren't very many curriculums available that met the state standards. Um, that hasn't gotten a lot better for high school. It has gotten better for middle school, but we, our teachers really need some quality materials in their hands. Need opportunity maybe to pilot or try out some programs. Um, so I'm working on get, getting some parents that are willing to commit to that. Our teachers, our administrators would also be a part of that as well. That's up to me.
Thank you, Deanna.
Um, so you will get used to this little piece of paper. Since we supplied you with a bunch of bu- a binder, so I want to share with you, um. There's a tab in their vocabulary. So when we use all this alphabet soup, that alphabet soup is in that vocabulary tab. Each board meeting I provide you with this. Um, I will hole punch it from now on, so if you want to put it in your binder, if you like to keep it, you can, otherwise you can throw it in the garbage. Um, cause I just pretty much go through it. It just tells you what I've been doing from, since the last board meeting. That's pretty much all it is. Um, so attending rotary chamber, Veterans Day assemblies, turkey trot, the youth cafe open house, we had our second levy meeting. Um, on Monday, we do have one legal issue that still remains open, is now slated for sometime in February. Um, on Monday, we do have one legal issue that still remains open, is now slated for sometime in February. We have a new situation that started today that you'll be brought abreast of as soon as, or as early as tomorrow. Um, the levy work, um, in the communication, we do have some webpage stuff we have to update. Selena's working on that, we're working out with our attorney Foster Garvey to make sure we're meeting all of the requirements of the state. We did meet with a, um, HMS, um, ASB students are super excited about this. Um, our, their, um, ASB advisor, Mr. Munoz is gonna help on that, we're trying to make sure we're sending. Letting the community know the good things that are going on and the strong things that are going on and what the students are participating in. Um, we, if you've been seeing the winter weather, um, message went out, went out to staff a little bit ago, we did update just a couple things. It'll go out again tomorrow, we are predicting our first potential winter weather on Thursday evening, so we wanna make sure. It's in the hands of people that we need it, we did send out a milk shortage update, um, on the website and some different meta. Um, went to parents' emails, um, this is not a processor issue, I tried really hard in my language, this is not a processor issue, this is a state issue. And it really, national at some point, it is about the packaging of the milk, um.
We should go back to cardboard instead.
Well, we think so, and the other thing is, is they offered a shelf-stable milk. And so I'm just telling you, I worked in Alaska and I drank shelf-stable milk and. We don't wanna use shelf-stable milk, so we're coming up with different ideas. Um, facilities, I'm super excited, met an amazing man, Andy and I did, Mark Brown, who's really going to be our partner, he's from OSPI. He takes care of, um, Eastern Washington facility stuff, he actually lives in Colfax. Um, so it's nice to have somebody like who comes and sits and talks with you. Um, this goes back to us wanting a facilities plan, um, we found a grant for thirty six or thirty nine thousand. Or thirty, yeah, anyhow, in that neighborhood, um, we're gonna be able to do that and, and truly be able to. Um, e- evaluate everything from housel and the position or condition it's in. To a plan of how we manage this building, how do we manage paint, how do we look forward to doing carpet, right? So that we're proactive in using our monies versus reactive when there's always a problem. Um, we're still continuing with the roof issues, it was on my report for, before for HMS and old PHS, oh, OPHS. Is what we decided to call the old building because we have PHS and then you say the old, and so we just added the O and, um. Believe it or not, we found some great news, the old PHS has had the asbestos removed on the building, let's say fifteen or eighteen years ago. So we don't have to deal with asbestos when we do that first part, but we still do have to do a sample. Um, if you have a drone, you might be interested to run your drone over the top of the old building and you will know why it's so expensive. To fix the roof, because there is so much up there, that has to be, like, so if you think about the years, right? So we had this power box and then we ran this and now we vacated this one, but we never took the box off and now we have this one and. So there's more to it than that, so that's why this is going on, continuing work. I'm happy to say that the camera in the front of this building is getting lowered, the one at KRV is getting raised. And we'll get everything ready to go, the goal is to have most of that work done during winter break, so it'll be ready to go January one. I did attend the WASDA conference, um, if you wanna hear about it, I could talk to you hours about it, so I won't, this is a brochure, probably. As a principal, I went to AWSP every year, but I now go to WASDA, um, I could have sat and talked. And listened to the lady who gave the law conference breakdown, so I went to the pre-conference on law, I could have listened to that particular meeting for two days. Um, fascinating the stuff that we manage and how we deal with it, it was very good. Um, I sent um, an email out, um, to Trish, um. Leibach, Leibach, uh, Lubach, Lubach, L U B A C H, Quincy State Representative, right? Anyhow, she is, works for WASDA and Tim Gershaw to see if they might come and do the bootcamp, that was one of the things here in our building. In our district for a day, and I think that would be great, uh, fiscal, I can't tell you enough, um. For the work on the numbers that Delise did for the levy committee, I think that was really good, we're gonna tighten them up a little bit. Um, the ASB budgets, you had brought it up, we're working on that, we're gonna figure that out, we're gonna clean that up, athletic budgets, um. Is messier than I, uh, you know, it's like an onion, we started on the ASB. And then it got deeper into athletics and it just kept going, um, spent some time, I've talked to, um, Sunnyside, Mapton, Richland, right? Trying to figure out how athletic budgets are run, so that we don't end up with all that money in ASB, proper use of booster monies. And so on and so forth, so I'll be able to report that to you after I really get it figured out, um. We're, believe it or not, we're tar- starting the budget preparation for twenty four twenty five, I am committed to each and every one of you that you will not be approving a budget in August. We will, um, we do have pieces, moving parts, we do have to see if the levy passes, right, that's a big piece of how you. But we are committed to laying it out and working on it and refining it. And being able to openly communicate about the budgets, um. Gap training, we had a great security meeting today, we're, um, gap, for those of you who are new. Gap is the training that we manage to teach our staff from the point where we have a. Oh poo poo moment and we have a bad guy or something bad going on in the school, till the time that the. Um, police can arrive to assist, it's the gap that we have to deal with that. And so there is a program that we use in, um, our district and many districts across the state. And we're getting ready to train that, and part of the contract that you signed with the city was, remember, we had to do that, and so we're planning theirs for in March. So we're moving forward.
Great. Right.
A dumb question.
Nope, dumb.
When's your fiscal year end?
We, um. Go ahead.
Au- August thirty first, but we already, we've already, I've already submitted all the reports, I just have to close.
Oh yeah, I was just curious.
From September first to August.
And traditionally, um, it's supposed to mimic the school calendar, right? Um, and if we're doing a good job at that, we would close our books, um, and you would approve that in October each year, the closing. Of the books before, and then there's this really icky limbo period, and it sounds bad, we haven't technically closed one year. But we're spending money out of the next year and it gets really messy, so Delise, next board meeting. We'll be presenting you with the September, October and November, nope, September and October. Um, financials for this year, cause they haven't been presented, cause we just got the books closed.
Thank you. All right, next up is board member reports, so this is an opportunity for each board member to. Really talk about anything that they have going on, um. I don't know, a lot like what, what was just heard, uh, with Noah shared. I don't know if you guys have anything, um, Michelle, we'll start with you.
Well, I met with Kim yesterday and we're gonna meet again, but next week, that's really it so far.
It'll, it'll, it'll get more.
I'm gonna go read my binder.
Right?
Uh, about the same, met, met with, uh, Kim in the morning and. That's about it.
Alisa, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, um, I don't have much, I just, um. I don't know who put the binder together, all of it, but, uh, Selena, Kim, thank you for doing all that work. I think it's a great help getting, uh, our new members up and running as fast as possible. Um, this is, trust me, everything you can imagine is in this book, it'll help you as you ask questions. Um, so we really appreciate the hard work that went into, to put that, to prepare them for, you know, for the board, so thank you. Um, other than that, I think I am, that's it, that's all I got. All right. No further business, we will have a regular board meeting on December thirteenth, right here. At the Proster High School Library Workroom at six PM, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.